I'll call on Councilwoman Placencia with the recommendation of removal of Sean Mill from Ward 5 seat on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. So, I would first like to thank and acknowledge our Board and Commissioners, whether you're here tonight or out at home watching. As a former Commissioner, I know how hard, how it feels to give of your time and sometimes feel like it is not appreciated. Please know that I do appreciate your efforts. As a newly-elected official, my first request to our city clerk was to get a list of our Commissioners and their terms. The purpose of this was to figure out who from Ward 5 I could appoint to ensure that our Boards and Commissions were truly what Riverside represents, a diverse and inclusive group. Over the years, I have seen the lack of representation on our Boards and Commissions and chose to make equity and access a top priority. My goal is to advocate for our city's core values and serve with integrity. Unfortunately, my predecessor did not serve with the same values in mind. Sean was forced to resign from the Planning Commission in Santa Ana in July of 2016 because he lived in Riverside while serving on the Commission in Santa Ana. According to the Orange County Register, he resigned one week before the next Planning Commission because a private investigator exposed him. On August 9th, 2016, one month later, Sean gets appointed to the Riverside Airport Commission, and less than a year later, was appointed to the Riverside Planning Commission. My predecessor's way of governing and actions are not how I choose to lead, but I do feel it is my responsibility to act and correct what I believe to be wrong. Thank you, Sean, for being consistent. I expected nothing less of you than slandering me and inciting more divide in the Ward and in our city. Your bullying antics only make me want to continue to advocate for a new Commissioner that will serve with integrity and put Riverside's values first. Riversideers in the audience or at home watching, please take out your phones and Google Sean Mill's name before you come up here and leverage your reputation on this individual. I would be doing our city and fellow Commissioners a disservice by allowing Sean to continue as a Commissioner. I understand that our city adopted a Board of Ethics process. However, I do not believe that this case applies, as he is not my appointee, and as the City Charter states, "The members of each such Board or Commission shall serve at the pleasure of the Mayor and City Council. They shall be subject to removal by the Mayor and City Council by a motion adopted by five affirmative votes, with the Mayor entitled to a vote." Nowhere in the City Charter does it say that I have to follow the path of the Code of Ethics process. Sean is not the first Commissioner that I have asked to resign, and I didn't intend on him being the last, as I am committed to changing the faces of our Boards and Commissions, while giving others in our community the opportunity to get involved civically. Only 26% of Ward 5 Commissioners are people of color. Two Commissioners sit on two Boards each. The first Commissioner that I asked to resign chose to give me the opportunity, as a Councilwoman, to carry out our city's core values and not make it personal. Where is the equity and access for all my constituents who would like to serve? Did you know that there's only one woman on the Budget Engagement Commission? I suspect that many of the other Commissions are much of the same. I do, why do I have to wait till their term is up and hope that they don't apply for a second term before I can work on our city's core values and bring a diverse perspective onto our Boards and Commissions? Some of the Commissioners' terms aren't up until 2023, and if they choose to stay for a second term, I would not be allowed to choose a Commissioner for eight years or so? At what point is it our responsibility to change the status quo? If I stand by and continue to allow these inequities to go on, it defeats the purpose of why I ran for office to begin with. I am not trying to offend our Commissioners or imply that they aren't valued, but you can deny that there is something wrong with not having our demographics reflected in our Boards and Commissions. I know it is unpopular to go against the grain and speak openly about the lack of equity and access that I have seen and experienced while serving my short tenure. I do not take this lightly. I know that I'm asking my constituents, my colleagues, and the Commissioners to allow me to govern with integrity and with the mission of addressing equity and access in City Hall. I have never wavered from my commitment to do what's right, regardless of the outcome or backlash. I will continue to govern with honesty and transparency and in the best interest of the residents in our city. And so, I apologize to those that reached out to me via email, asking me questions, but I wanted to read this statement publicly. So, my motion is to remove Sean Mill from the Planning Commission, and I'm asking for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
There's a number of speaker cards here this evening. I'll look to the Council. Is there any other questions, clarifying questions, to the Councilwoman about her motion and/or any other suggestions or motions by Councilmembers this evening prior to public Saying that, I'll ask the public to weigh in, beginning with Martin Russo, followed by Judy Tunisen, and then Richard Kirby.
That's on?
Yep.
Well, maybe we should bring it a little higher. Good evening, Mayor, and fellow, I mean, Councilmembers. My name is Martin Russo. I'm actually currently the Chair for the Planning Commission, and I want to make it clear that I feel that, actually, you can tell I'm a little emotional because I really got upset sitting over there. You know, it takes a lot of effort to volunteer for any kind of Commission. You have to take your time, you have to make changes in your lifetime, and when you commit it for eight years, and you don't miss them any paper, it tells you that you want to serve the community. So, for a City Councilmember to decide to remove somebody because they feel they're not the right fit for that, I think is absolutely atrocious. Now, I've known Sean for a while, and I do believe Sean is absolutely ethical, and the whole Planning Commission work together as a team. And when we turn him out, we move our ways, and new people get appointed. But I do believe that we should not randomly decide to remove somebody because we don't like them, or they don't fit the narrative that we want to have. Secondly, I think this has a bad effect on the whole community, because if I was a volunteer and I did listen to this, I would not even make the effort of being appointed again as a Commissioner on any kind of Board. And I feel we're actually doing a disservice to the community, fellow Commissioners, and the fellow Boards. Thank you.
Judy Tunisen, followed by Richard Kirby, and then Gloria Matson Huerta.
Thank you, City Council, Honorable Mayor, City Staff, Judy Tunisen, Ward 6. As Martin said, we're all quite emotional about this. I sit on the Planning Commission as an at-large. I was on the Planning Commission in Ward 6 until I moved, and the equity that you're speaking of is a very difficult thing to get when you're in some wards in our cities. I think Ward 6, without anybody in the Planning Commission for almost two years, as our Councilman that is in that Ward was diligently trying to find somebody. So, when we look at the makeup of Boards and Commissions, it's volunteer, and if because you don't seem to like the color of my shoes, my eyes, my hair, or my skin, it should not be that case for somebody that is volunteering. You're looking at changing the whole dynamic of every Board and Commission in this city. That means that we will serve at the will of the Councilperson, not the will of the Council and the Mayor, which appoints us. I don't serve at the will of a Councilperson. I serve at the will of you. And I hope that every single one of you will look at that very diligently before we change the makeup of our city that cannot be changed. This feels to me like a couple children playing on a playground, and they want to be king of the hill, and one of them does not realize she's already won.
Richard Kirby, followed by Gloria Matson Huerta, and then Connie Decker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff. My name is Richard Kirby. I've lived on Riverside since a lot of you weren't even born, 1950. I remember Sage's Market, strawberry pies, and Golden State Theater. So, I've been here a while. I have a degree in Business Management from the University of Redlands. I've been in construction business for over 40 years. I retired from Kaiser Permanente as a project manager for their major capital projects. I was asked by Councilman Gardner to serve on the Transportation Committee at one time after I retired, and I said, "I would love to." A few years later, he asked me if I'd be interested in going on the Planning Commission. I said, "I'd love to." I'd love Riverside. I've lived here, gone away, got divorced, came back, so this is my home. I do not believe that I would have volunteered to be on a Commission, whether it be Transportation or City Council or whatever, had I known that I could be replaced because Mike didn't like me, or Councilwoman Edwards decided that, you know, it's hers, it's her ballpark now, so, you know, we need to talk to each other, we need to figure out what's going on. I do not believe that, I believe that who's ever served on a Planning Commission especially needs to have some background in construction, or city management, or allocations of how you do things, how you build things. It's not just a matter of, you know, nailing something up and saying, "Okay, I got a building here." You know, we have codes for a reason. I don't always understand codes, but I appreciate codes. I think that, that we all just need to just relax and take a moment to understand what this would do if you guys decide that you want to remove one person because of they don't like each other. I don't know. I mean, I just have a hard time understanding how this can happen in a city like Riverside. You know, we talk about minorities and people of color. Well, if you look at it, I'm a minority. I'm over 73, and I'm a white male. So, you know, what does that have to do with it? It shouldn't be a matter of race, creed, color, whatever. It should be a matter of, is he doing a good job? Are we doing a good job? If we're not, then come to us, talk to us, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Huerta, followed by Connie Decker, and then Keith Nelson.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Gloria Matson Huerta. I live in Ward 7. I work part-time in Ward 1. I've been a City of Riverside resident since 1978, and I've had the pleasure of volunteering on many Boards and Commissions, so I guess I'm a serial Commissioner. What I'd like to say, and I'm speaking just for my role as a citizen in the City of Riverside, I'm not speaking for the Commission I serve on. Volunteers are one of the strongest assets Riverside City has. We serve the city management, the City Council, the Mayor, and the residents, so that we can meet the needs of the residents and the visitors to the City of Riverside. I was assigned to the Board and Commission I'm on as a City-at-Large representative. I would hate for one of you to decide that my comments tonight were so offensive that you had to take action and ask that I be removed from the Board, that I love serving my city. The reasons we serve are varied. Some of us are altruistic. I was raised in a military family. I've worked in paramilitary organizations. I believe in giving back. I was taught that was what my responsibility was. I'm also a professional with many degrees. Does it make a difference? I believe that I can use my strengths to serve this community. Some people may use being on a Board or Commission as an avenue to pursue elected office. So what? It helps make our community stronger. There's nothing in any ordinance or municipal code that requires appointed Board members to agree 100% with any one of you on this Board or this dais. And I would argue that independence and diversity should be encouraged, permitted, because it stimulates our city growth. It's the differences that make us better and stronger. It's not the fact that we all agree, or that we all look alike. We should value diversity and encourage frank, honest, and lively discussion that permits a broader review of issues important to our city and its people. I liked what you said, Ms. Edwards, the people, we have to value our people. Your Commissioners, we are your people. We serve you. The Boards are structured in such a way that not, we don't serve eight years in a row. We serve four-year terms, and they're staggered so that we have continuity on those Boards, so that we don't have a turnover with all new people that have to be reoriented and reeducated to the role of that Commission. I would really strongly encourage you to look at the Ethics Ordinance. Section 2.78.060 talks about violations. Section 2.78.050 talks about our core values, and I can tell you, the core values of creating a government that's trusted by everyone, making decisions that are unbiased, fair, and honest, striving to treat everyone with respect, including a community of diversity, and maintain a nonpartisan and civic-minded local government is being violated if you approve this action tonight.
Connie Decker, followed by Keith Nelson, and then Richard Maslenko.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Connie Decker, and I'm a longtime resident of Riverside. I was a public school counselor and educator for 37 years and a business owner for 10. Sean Mill is a highly-regarded friend, who has been maligned by Ms. Placencia. She is engaged in personally-targeted harassment and slander towards Sean with no factual basis or specifics. Sean was appointed unanimously to the Planning Commission in 2017. I won't belabor the grounds for removal, but he doesn't meet any of those. What did happen was Ms. Placencia has attempted to sully the reputation of a good man and a wonderful servant to the city by accusing him of being unethical with no cited instances or proof. In her phone call to Sean Mill, Ms. Placencia demanded his resignation, and when Sean asked why, she said, "I don't have to explain myself to you." She threatened to publicly embarrass him and drag him through the mud of the media. She then hung up on him. Ms. Placencia, you won your election, and Sean is one of your constituents. You could have made the choice to be a gracious victor. Instead, you have chosen the low road, engaging in slander and hatefulness I can only assume because you don't like him. It's a shame, Ms. Placencia, that we have to be here defending Sean Mill, even though I'm happy to do so. Your time might have been better spent as a new member of this body, with your eyes and ears open and your mouth shut, while you truly learn to address the overwhelming problems in this city: homelessness, possible insolvency, purse pension debt, how to really address the mental health and drug addiction that plagues so many in our city. This is clearly a matter of petty vindictiveness, which has no place on the City Council or in our city. I plan to follow up with a letter requesting a personal letter of apology on behalf of Sean Mill, and I am very angry.
Keith Nelson, followed by Richard Maslenko, and then Paul Anderson.
Allow me to introduce myself to those on the Council and the Mayor that don't know me. My name's Keith Nelson. I've been involved with the city for quite some time, from Special Olympics to serving on various Boards and Commissions, to being an employer in the city and working in the city. Earlier today, we talked about attracting business to the city. I just brought a lot of business to the city. Actions like this make me think this Council's too immature to have business in the city. I sit on the Board of Ethics, but I'm not speaking on their behalf. I think this movement, when I read this on the agenda, and this is the first time I've ever come down to the City Council about anything negative, every time it's been positive. When I read this on the agenda, I thought, "Your only action is to vote it off." Any taxpayer, which by the way is your employer, that had an issue with someone on ethics would take it to the Board of Ethics. That's what the City Charter's about. That's what the Board of Ethics is about. Now, we're saying, because we sit behind the dais, we can take unscrupulous advantage of a position when our Ward elected to employ us and say, "I don't like him. I want to remove him." Wrong. Follow the process. File a complaint if you have a legitimate one. And after watching the debate on the last issue, our Ethics Board is more qualified to hear those complaints than what I saw here. I am very much ashamed of what went on. I think that you humiliated him, and to say, "Go Google it," I have a degree in computer science. I understand what Googling means and what kind of data you're going to get. I think you're condescending and disrespectful, and talking about diversity, my son with special needs serves on the Commission on Disabilities. We have diversity in the city. Diversity means accepting those and showing tolerance. It's not agreeing with who you agree with, it's tolerating who you disagree with. Thank you.
Richard Maslenko, followed by Paul Anderson, and then Julie Battaglia.
Mayor, if I may just state a couple things. In terms of name-calling...
Andy, we've got public comment going.
I understand, but in terms of...
Unless it's a response to public comment, that we need to get through public comment, and then you can respond at the end.
I understand, but in terms of name-calling, I think it needs to be tamed.
Okay.
I understand, I understand the concern.
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough, fair enough. Richard Maslenko, followed by Paul Anderson, and then Judy Battaglia.
Richard Maslenko, Ward 5. I've known Sean Mill for a few years now. Sean is a sincere, truthful, and honest man. Sean's principle and conviction has served our city well and will continue to do so. Three points cited for removal from his, this Commission are no longer qualified elector, convicted of a crime or of moral perpetuity, absent from three consecutive regular meetings. Do any of these conditions exist regarding Sean Mill? Is this new Council ready to engage in questionable politics with no basis for this action? Is this new Council ready to engage in exercising poor judgment so soon after being elected? I believe the citizens elected you to be supportive of our city and residents using wise judgment in all your decisions. Would your time be better spent looking at some real and more important issues facing our city? I encourage this Council to support Sean Mill and reject this action. Thank you.
Paul Anderson, followed by Judy Battaglia, and then Roy Blackert.
That's on? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. The removal of Sean Mill is untimely and underhanded. With this vote coming, we will have no representation in Ward 5 for any upcoming planning issues. I am really, I had a lifelong letter here, and I'm so mad I can't see straight. So, thinking about that, and I'm not going to call any names, but I just think this is underhanded, and that's it. And I don't want to say anymore because you might arrest me. Thank you.
Julie Battaglia, followed by Roy Blackert, and then Scott Hilton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Julie Battaglia. I am a member of Ward 5. The proposed removal of Sean Mill is ill-time and self-serving. Leaving our Ward without representation is a slap in the face. My neighbors and I are fighting a proposal for the St. Michael Project. Mr. Mill has at least wanted to hear our concerns on the matter. That's more than we've received from any other city official. There is a great amount of misinformation about this project, and Mr. Mill has only tried to get us information. The notice of the vote for this project on February 6th that our neighborhood has received did not include previous promises made by Mercy House. The facts about this project seem to change depending on who you're speaking with, specifically the pastor of St. Michael's. Hopefully, our Council representative will get up to speed on this so she can explain and inform the neighborhood that is directly affected by this project on January 31st at 5:30 at Hunt Park Rink Center. I say this because previous attempts to speak with our representative have been ignored or canceled. Hopefully, this one will occur. The St. Michael Project is a 50-unit, two-story apartment complex consisting of 25 one-bedroom and 25 two-bedroom apartments. That is more weight than our small neighborhood should have to carry on its own. We want to be inclusive. We want to help, but this is too much. That's upwards of 150 people in our small neighborhood just landed on us. It's hard to welcome neighbors of that number. Please consider the original 20 that was presented in 2017, when we were first approached by St. Michael's and Mercy House for this project. Mr. Mill has been the only one that has even given us a time of day, and I applaud him for that.
Roy Blackert, followed by Scott Hilton, and then Melissa McKeeth. Is Roy... Roy still here? He left. Scott Hilton, followed by Melissa McKeeth, and then Susan Pike.
I am Scott Hilton. My wife and I have lived in Riverside for 12 years on Sage Avenue. We share the back wall of our house with St. Michael's Church. Three years ago, we learned about the St. Michael's Housing Project, and we are devastated about the impact it will have on us. We have been fighting the city to stop this project, along with dozens of neighbors who also oppose this. The City Council and Mayor have ignored us and worked against us. During the last City Council campaign, Sean Mill walked through the neighborhood and listened to our complaints and pleas for help. He listened to our fears of safety, the property value loss, and the construction of a monstrous project on a small property in the middle of an established neighborhood already saddled with two rehab houses. Sean Mill listened, but never committed to anything other than to look fairly and transparently at the project. The removal request has nothing to do with the behavior of Sean Mill. It is quite obvious the motive is to make sure he is removed before the upcoming February 6 vote on St. Michael's. The motive is to make sure the Planning Commission is only filled with those who will vote for the project. The fear is that Sean Mill might vote against this project, or at least bring it under more scrutiny. The remainder of the Planning Commission should be very concerned. Should the city be allowed to target any of you on future agendas? Can they manipulate you to follow their schemes and target you like they have Sean Mill? This removal request must be recognized for what it is, a deliberate attempt to undermine a fair vote on St. Michael's. The removal request was signed by Councilwoman Placencia, Councilman Ronaldo Fiero, who is also on the Board of Directors of Path of Life Ministry, Mayor Bailey's future new employer. Isn't there a conflict of interest for the Mayor and Councilmen? I ask four things from the City Council and Planning Commission. Show proof in public of any error or misbehavior showing that Sean Mill should be removed. Two, realize the devious actions and last-minute moves indicate your need to put this project under deeper scrutiny. It is now more important than ever that you maintain your impartiality and follow due diligence. Don't allow the Commission to be anything less than independent. Three, demand that Councilwoman Placencia, Councilman Fiero, and Mayor Bailey recuse themselves from any future voting on this issue. The last-minute attempts to interfere with a fair vote and the apparent conflict of interest with current and future employee of Path of Life Ministry should disqualify them. And four, delay any removal from the Commission until after the March 3rd mayoral election, just six weeks away. Let the new mayor assess this and lead the city forward. Thank you.
Melissa McKeeth.
Mayor, quick comment on this last one.
Quick comment, brief comment?
Yes, sir. Just so you'll know, Mr. Fiero is no longer on the Board. When he was elected, he resigned from that Board, so he is no longer on the Board of Path of Life. Just so you'll know.
Good evening, Melissa McKeeth. The first thing I want to point out is that this could become extremely costly from a monetary perspective. We all remember Scott Barber, Subaru, and Davis fighting with each other. Councilwoman Placencia will have attorneys representing her. Mr. Mills will have attorneys representing him, because they both are city officials. It'll probably be the citizens who get to pay for this. We don't have the money to do this. The second thing is it's going to be very costly in terms of trust. I don't know Councilwoman Placencia, and I don't know Mr. Mill. In fact, the first time I saw him was today, when I was grousing in front of him about how much this was going to cost us, and somebody pointed out who he was. And let me tell you why it's costly in terms of trust. There was an undertone in the election in Ward 5 that we didn't see other places, and it's a dangerous undertone. My friends on the white referred to Ms. Placencia as, you know, the AOC wannabe. My friends on the left called Sean Mill, you know, a MAGA hat, fat white guy. And unfortunately, this is a lot more interesting than talking about pension obligation, but if we let this go forward, it's going to create more division along those lines. I would urge, if nothing else, that Councilmember Melendrez and Councilmember Conder, the two sort of senior guys on the Council, at least table this issue and try to mediate peace between these people, because, again, it would be extremely expensive. But honestly, I would like Councilwoman Placencia to be the bigger man and to actually decide on her own that perhaps this was a little bit a bridge too far for our city. I understand and appreciate the need for diversity. I was a blind woman coming up through the law firms in Los Angeles in the 80s, and trust me, it was no fun. And when I did get some power, I didn't always use it as wisely as I could, which was partly youth, which I no longer have, but, you know, I realize that sometimes... youth, which I no longer have, but, you know, I realized that sometimes it was a bad step. Your friends are concerned it was a bad step. Probably some of the people who don't like you believe it was a bad step. The easiest thing we can do right now, as a city, is to mend and not divide further and have this situation get out of council, out of the newspapers. It just makes us look bad. So, I really do hope that Councilman Melendrez and Councilman Conder will help in terms of trying to resolve this issue so we're not paying a bunch of attorneys. There's nothing worse than us having to pay the attorneys in order to watch you guys fight, just like Rusty had to sue over the veto, and look at, it's cost us nearly $1 million in attorney's fees. We could have put that money into homeless shelters. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. You guys must be tired. So, when I first wrote this, because I hadn't heard back from Ms. Placentia, I just assumed it was a back-room deal, you know, the 1920s-style back-room deal. Well, this is 2020, so let's not do that, all right, you guys? I think now it's more of a sexist racist thing. I mean, you know, when you get up and say, "There's not enough women." Oh, I'm a woman, okay. There are plenty of people who have spoken, and they're women. Racist? Well, I'm sorry, I'm white, not a woman of color, but I think that if I were chosen, and believe me, I would not be a volunteer for a commission. I could probably be fairer, though. But I will say, contravening the Sunshine Ordinance, threatening exposure but not explaining any charges because, you know, you couldn't get back to us, your constituents, that is a terrible precedent to set. Today, it's Sean Mill being threatened with removal, but tomorrow, it could be any of your appointees. Am I correct? I mean, if she just feels like, you know, I can remove anyone I want, anybody could do the same thing, and then where would we be? Absolute chaos. From my reading, and again, this is a repeat, the only way a commission member can be removed is if he is no longer a qualified elector of the city, convicted of a crime of moral turpitude, or absent from three consecutive meetings, which has been shown not to be the case. So, I must ask those council members who believe in our due process to refuse to vote for removal. As Mayor Bailey said himself just a few minutes ago, well, more than a few minutes ago now, there have to be rules, even for government. That's in the record, so he said that. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. I know it's been a really long day, and I appreciate everything you guys do, even you, Gabby.
Just to note that Mayor Bailey did have to leave to attend to other city business, so I will be taking over as mayor pro temp and continuing with public comment. We have the Reverend Paul S. McEnford, and next in line, Keith Sklarsky, followed by Sean Mill.
Thank you, Council. I'm Reverend Paul Munford. I'm the pastor of New Joy Baptist Church here in Riverside for 30 years. I am also the president of Riverside Clergy Association. We just celebrated Sunday Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. community birthday celebration, and we gave four champion of justice awards to institutions for training and helping homeless and ex-offender to be able to acquire skill sets to be part of the residential home-building industry. I was excited listening to your agenda, talking about homelessness and talk about economic power, and then I looked at this part about the removal of Sean, and it has just spoiled the day, just spoiled the night. I thought that this was, that the election was about helping homeless, building our business community, strengthening our educational and our city, and not a political payback. You guys fought real hard. Sean and you fought real hard. I attended several of the debates, and they were not pretty. You threw hardball at Sean, and Sean threw hardball at you. And certainly, he did not make you his friend. And this is payback. I know people in my congregation and in my community that know you well and have spoke well of you. And I have people even in my congregation that have even voted for you, but this is an all-time low. You have a great opportunity to do your work as a councilwoman with grace. You have heard all these people that have spoken on his behalf, not because he's unethical, but because he is ethical, because he is a smart man. He's a good man. He's an educated person. He's well-qualified. Don't be jealous. Just try to rise a little higher, get like he is. And I just want to say to you, Sean Mill is a wonderful person. This night has been marred with this. You really have made a big mistake. Sean is my son-in-law.
Thank you so much.
He married my daughter, and I just want to thank you very much.
Next comment, Keith Sklarsky, followed by Sean Mill, followed by Donald Doc.
Thank you, Councilman Edwards. Appreciate it. Gabby, Sean's a friend of mine, and I just want to be completely honest with you that what you're doing, you're sitting up here talking about diversity. Guess what? Sean brings diversity, diversity of thought, and you guys need that. You want to sit here and talk about all these things that you guys got to get done. You're looking at it from one side. Sean's a good person, right? Would you want to be, you brought up him being removed from another city's board, right? Would you want to be judged in front of all these people by the worst things that you've done? I don't think so, right? We can move past these things. Sean does not deserve to be removed from the commission.
I was hoping that you would save me for last, but that's fine. Good evening. I had good afternoon on my paper, but good evening. What we have before us this evening, it's not a question of Sean Mill versus Gabby Placentia that hadn't ended in November, well, at least it did for me. What you have before you is good government versus bad government, good policy versus bad policy, and open government and transparency versus shady secretive scheming. I'm not here to defend myself or my actions. I don't believe neither I nor they need to be defended. I am here to defend the process in which we select and remove commissioners and the process of transparency within the Sunshine Ordinance. Your actions today will set precedents, and they will send a message to anyone who is volunteering or may volunteer to serve in the future. Your actions aren't a reflection upon Sean Mill. They are a reflection upon the council and the policy and procedures that follows. If the council member's desire is to remove me before my term expires is based on personal animus, she should simply state that. If she says she wants me removed because she doesn't like me, that really won't hurt my feelings. However, remember by doing so, you are setting the bar there. The city council will send a message that liking a person is more important than their qualifications, experience, or job performance. If, on the other hand, the council member says that this is a question of ethics, then follow the procedures and file an ethics complaint under the penalty of perjury. Again, let me repeat that, under the penalty of perjury with the city board of ethics. This is already in place for situations just like this. Why make a end run around the rules and procedures already set up? And if this is how we are going to handle such allegations, the city council should act now to dissolve the ethics board and handle all complaints in this fashion. Lastly, the Sunshine Ordinance. We have rules in place regarding placing items on the agenda. If a council member can simply allege it's an emergency without providing any documentation to skirt our open meeting and transparency laws, the council should act now to dissolve the Sunshine Ordinance. I welcome any questions that you may have, and I thank you for your opportunity to address you.
We have Donald Doc, followed by Irma Flores, then Erica Valencia. Donald, it looks like DOC? Oh, DIX, apologies.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you because of the applause. I want to know, point of clarification, did I just hear Councilmember Gabby Placentia say that because an individual on the commission is not the right sex or color, they should be removed because we haven't achieved diversity, which pays absolutely no attention to someone's qualifications? I think that's what I did hear. All of this awesome, happy talk today about the future of Riverside, the trust, the credibility has completely been undone by this action tonight on this agenda. Congratulations, council member. Your charade made the press enterprise. Let me read. Riverside Councilwoman Gabby Placentia is trying to remove the planning commissioner for the ward she represents and who narrowly lost in a bitter-fought election here in November. Sean Mill's four-year term ends March 2021, but Placentia is seeking the council to remove him Tuesday, January 21st. After her recommendation, the city council set the vote for Tuesday, waiving the Sunshine Ordinance that usually requires items to be put on the agenda 12 days before a vote. This request was filed on January 17th. The Press Enterprise says she said, "You either resign or I'll have you removed because I'm sure you don't want your name and your family to be dragged through the media." So, "I took that as a threat," Sean Mill said, "and my first call was to the city attorney to report a violation of the city's ethics code." That's coercion of an elected official. Councilmember Placentia has made unspecified, unsubstantiated, and unproven allegations of ethical violations. Maybe we'll actually hear what those are today, maybe not. You have made allegations of ethics violations against someone whose livelihood is conditioned upon ethical behavior, someone who was employed in the financial services industry. You have impugned his character and potentially damaged his employment future. Given the information we now know about her actions over the last month, both as evidenced by her own texts authored not as a private citizen but in her capacity as an elected official, and the testimony by those who were party to these conversations, if she is unwilling to bring these allegations into the light of day, bring a formal charge to the Ethics Committee, then she should apologize, and you should resign.
Irma Flores, followed by Erica Valencia, followed by Janice Schuler.
My name is Irma Flores, and I live and work in Ward 3, and I also have a business in Ward 1. Good evening, Mayor, council members, or Mayor pro temp, council members and staff. You know, I just attended Reverend Munford's event at the Park Avenue Church. It was an incredible event, and, you know, one thing that was said, and, you know, the one particular pastor was talking about is divisiveness, and this Councilman Valencia is very divisive. We don't need that. And as far as the color of your skin, we need to remember what MLK said. "I have a dream that my four children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And so, if you know anything about Martin Luther King, you should know that. And so, I'm not here to try to slam you or anything. I just think that your choices were not, especially, you got elected, you won, move on, you know, just be kind, show grace. And so, those are the things that are very important. And so, one thing that I want to leave you with is that when President Obama was first elected as president, he chose his rival, his opponent, and asked her to be the Secretary of State. The good thing, too, is that she accepted. He was wise to do that. That's a wise man. So, just be wise as you move forward. I wish you the best, and try not to be divisive. It serves us no good to be divisive. Thank you.
Erica Valencia, followed by Janice Schuler, followed by Bob Mendez.
No, I am not going to speak about St. Michael's property tonight. Why did you not notify Ward 5 residents that the city council wanted to remove Sean from the planning commission? We thought that as residents of Ward 5, we would have the right to vote to keep or remove Sean from the planning commission. To our surprise, the city council will not make, would make the choice for us. We no longer have a voice. No one seems to care how we feel. Do you represent us, or do you represent yourselves? Please do not remove Sean from Ward 5. Thank you.
Bob Mendez, followed by Rich Gardner, followed by Jason Hunter.
Good evening, city council, city staff. My name is Bob Mendez, and while I serve on the Budget Engagement Commission, I am here as a concerned resident and citizen of our city. What makes this city unique is the tremendous amount of volunteers who sacrifice time away from their families and businesses to serve on the city commissions and boards, and Sean Mill is one of them. He has made a tremendous amount of sacrifice through his business and through his family to serve on the planning commission, and from everything I've heard of what he has done on the planning commission, he has served it well. I first met Mr. Mill right here in this chamber, because he is a concerned citizen. He cares about what happens to the city, and shouldn't that be one of the primary reasons why you would want to appoint somebody to a commission? I would also encourage the city council to welcome opposing opinions, not try to stamp them out. This is only going to create an ugly precedence. One only has to look at history to see what happens when you only have one voice, one opinion, and only one way of thinking. I may not have always agreed with what this dais has done or the items it has passed, but I've always had nothing but respect for this chamber. In my humble opinion, this chamber is a symbol of what is great with our city and what could be great with our city. So, it pains me to no end to make this statement, to simply say that this item before you is beneath this chamber, and it is certainly beneath the city council. Instead of focusing our energy on solving our pension issues and many other problems we have, we're looking at removing Mr. Mill from a voluntary position. Now, I mentioned earlier that I serve on the Budget Engagement Commission, and I would probably say that of the commissioners, I'm one of the more fiscally conservative ones. So, often I have spoke out and said that we need to outsource where we can, we need to aggressively address our pension issues. So, it makes me wonder, am I going to be next? Am I going to be holed up here and then lambasted for all the time that I've volunteered? I would certainly hope not, but I've already heard from other BEC people who are concerned about whether, one, that they might come under attack, or, two, that we may not be able to fill the other remaining seats. As you know, the BEC has had trouble basically having quorons at times. So, I would just strongly encourage, urge you to vote against this item, which, again... So, I would just strongly encourage, urge you to vote against this item, which, again, is beneath this chamber.
We have Rich Gardner, followed by Jason Hunter, followed by Andrew Villalobos.
Good evening, everybody, Rich Gardner, Ward Four. And just so people out there that don't understand what the Sunshine Ordinance is, basically, things are supposed to be put on the agenda so the public can look at them, read the reports, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 10 days, I might be wrong, it might be two weeks. But what this does is it gives the public an opportunity to digest, see what's going on. Now, this opportunity on this issue was not provided to the public. There was one report, I read through it, I won't really go into details, but nowhere on it did it list, like, the reasons that we want to dismiss Shawn Mills from the Planning Commission. So, I have a big problem with that, especially when someone up there tells me that I should Google his name, or I might ruin my reputation by coming up here and even speaking. I found that kind of ironic because you had the opportunity to list the reasons in your report. I mean, there's no reason why you could not. I mean, did your computer stop working all of a sudden? I don't get it. So, anyway, I've only met Shawn Mills once, and that was at a Chamber of Commerce event over at Rockstars or whatever. I personally took time to go meet Ronaldo Fierro at his forum because I thought that was important for what I was planning on doing. I didn't meet Ms. Placentia because the five, Ward Five forum was done. I went and met you at not only your forum. And one thing, just in closing, it's been a long night for everybody, but I want to say that I appreciate everybody. I really do. And everyone up here that I'm looking around, not only the audience, but when I greet someone, they usually say, "How are you?" If I say something to them, they say, "How are you?" Now, Ms. Placentia, you're actually my council member. I have a house in Ward Five. I've approached you, I think, three different times. I've never gotten a "How are you?" I don't understand, maybe you've got a lot on your mind, but I don't get it. I mean, we're all in this thing called life together. It's actually National Hug Day, okay? So, I don't think you two are going to hug when this is over with, but let's just be nice. I don't understand the reasonings. If it's actually just an ethnicity-based movement, then that's really not right. So, that's all I got to say. And from what I've met of Shawn and listening to everybody, he seems like a nice guy.
Jason Hunter, followed by Andrew Villalobos, followed by Richard Rubio.
Good evening, Jason Hunter. Just enjoying this back there, chomping on my popcorn, all the drama. So, Ms. Placentia, I held up hope that during your opening, you could convince me that you haven't abused your power as an elected official. I did, I held up hope to the last second. I've heard nothing to persuade me that you haven't put yourself above the public as far as following our vetted process. Let me go through why that's important. You said you don't have to follow the ethics process, but the reason you follow the ethics process if you have ethical complaints is to avoid this. Okay? The ethics process, we went through years of developing it. We've had city councilmen bring ethics complaints in the past. And the reason is because it affords due process to somebody who otherwise you might be slandering or smearing, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. It has in the past. And what does it provide? Two essential elements of due process. Notice and the ability, meaningful ability to respond. Mr. Mills doesn't have meaningful ability to respond here, he's got three minutes. Okay? Secondly, if you have allegations of substance, bring them. You've got the Ethics Committee here, they're saying, "Bring the charges." I'm sure the public would like to see them if you have allegations of substance. The second thing is, back to notice, you have, in my opinion, violated the spirit of our Sunshine Ordinances, right? Our Sunshine Ordinances, if you put something on the urgent calendar with another, you need two council members, the councilman and the mayor, and it's only the need to take immediate action, this is right from our municipal code, which came to the attention of the local body after the agenda was posted. This is clearly not the case here. This is a violation of the sort, of the spirit of the Sunshine Ordinance. I might argue the letter of it. So, before Mill Placentia, okay, before Rusty versus Russo, okay, we had Barber and Priamos going after, and other people going after Davis and Subaru, okay? We've seen this all before in the public. You should have read the newspapers. It didn't turn out too well for the people who brought those allegations. The city paid out a lot of money. Taxpayer money was wasted, totally wasted in that case. The city manager and the attorney were out the door in six months, okay? And who were part of the ploy to bring those charges. And in an interesting twist, ethics charges were filed against the very same council members that brought forth the spurious allegations against Davis and Subaru. Okay? So, it got, it just got juxtaposed completely, and that's what's probably going to happen here. So, how you respond to this will determine your future, my bet is, here on the council in the next five years. Is this a rookie mistake, or is it the signs of someone who wants to be the queen? So, I pray, please learn from this experience. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew Villalobos, followed by Richard Rubio.
Counsel, you guys doing all right? I just thought I'd want to say a couple words just because it's been pretty one-sided, and I think different opinions are important. So, my background's a little different than most people. I spent several years playing professional sports in Europe, and it was, it was common. Every time a new coach would get, when a coach get fired, a new one would come in, players would be out, staff would be out, things got changed, and you moved on with it. Now, this is obviously a different situation, but my personal opinion is if we have new people on board, we have new managers here on the, on the council, then they should have an ability to pick new people. Granted, I think the specific dynamics with this specific individual, it's shrouded the whole thing. So, I'd be interested to hear what this conversation would be like if it wasn't Shawn, particularly him. Would that make it very different? Jason had some good points, a lot of people had good points, but I just wanted to bring that to light. I think that, for me, I'm in Ward One, I voted for Erin. I did that in part because I would want her to select certain people to be on certain boards. I trust her opinion. I don't know Gabby that well, but I'd imagine that people in your ward trust your opinion, too. So, just thought I'd throw my two cents out there.
Final comment card tonight is Richard Rubio.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Councilmen, and friends. I say that because I think that we are all friends in some way or another, and we've lost our side, the side of who we really want to be and who we are. I am a longtime Riverside-er. I ran against that young man up there. And during our campaign, we had our little jabs and so on, but they weren't jabs that were going to cut to the, to the quick. We were going to do things that, and I think we all agreed, that we were all going to do things in a honorable way. I'm not saying that Gabby, you, or Shawn didn't do things honorably. You did things in a, in a form that you felt was right for you, he did things that was right for him. I will tell you that all of you received a letter that I had, and for some reason, I thought maybe this thing would be over earlier. And I want to say this to Ronaldo. Ronaldo, I'm glad you're sitting there because my butt would be sore. But getting to the serious part, I ran, I put my name in, as I think that the city clerk can remember, three different times to be on the Planning Commission. Right? And it took me a period of time to get on the Planning Commission, and I was finally on. I was on at the same time as the gentleman that's Shawn Mills tonight. I was on on 2017. I'm off on 2021. Somebody could say, "Well, why are you up here now?" And luckily, I'm the last man, because I think that the man upstairs is saying something to all us, all of us. "My last name is Rubio. I've been here in Riverside for a long period of time, and you know me. You know my family. All of you know that I own a restaurant. I work for the District Attorney's Office, and I'm the tribal liaison. I put people together. I'm offering an opportunity for you to..." Maybe I'm not the wisest guy, but I would like to have, give you the opportunity to mend offense and clear a path. If that be the case, I'm here for you. Thank you so much.
Scott Andrews.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Staff, members of the audience. Because I can't have a conversation or the city clerk can't answer me back, I'd like one of you to ask her during your conversations if this has ever happened before in the city. Somebody just removed because we want them to. Why commissions? Commissions are really the public's voice in the process. These are volunteers from the community, one from each ward, sometimes for the, that represent the whole city. They do not necessarily work for you or represent you. They represent the citizens. It's the citizens' voice to the city council. So, if everybody came in and removed all their, all their commissioners, we would lose a lot of institutional memory on these commissions. It would be horrible situation. You know, in a court of law, and I know this is not a court of law, although it seems to be a kangaroo court, past discretions are not necessarily allowed in evidence. So, what he did somewhere else may be regrettable, but what he did when he's been in the city of Riverside is what I would judge him on. This is most likely the, one of the worst ideas to come across this council, except for maybe the trolley. Unless there was something Mr. Mills did that was clearly outside the scope of his duties and the ethics standards set forth by the city, there's no reason for this political payback. Whether or not this is the case, just the appearance of this is a good reason not to do it. Serving at the pleasure of the council and the mayor is a reference to not being accountable to the city manager, not a backdoor way to eliminate commissioners that don't match your outlook. We have about 24 vacancies on the boards and commissions now. Just think what will happen if this happens and people say, "Well, geez, if I get on and I say something that doesn't agree with my councilman, I'm out of here." People will stop volunteering for these positions. So, I just would like to see that you got, oh, I'm sorry. One of the things is the BEC, she said the BEC now has only one female member, and that may be true, but there were four or five when it was first formed. So, just because it's called its way down, I think is not a good way to look at it. And as far as not having the diversity, you know, you have to apply to these commissions. If people don't apply, they can't get appointed. And there's a reason that we have a mayor's nomination and commission to, the whole council votes on these, on these positions, not just the councilmen. Otherwise, we would just have you, we wouldn't have a nomination committee, we would just have you appoint them. So, I just think this is a dangerous precedent and should be avoided at all costs. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other comment cards on this issue. Are there any brief comments to public comment?
I do, just have some very brief comments. And this is to the community. Basically, I have been on the city council since 2006, and we have seen our bumps in the road over that period of time. I recall in 2006, we had a council member out to my left and went to my right that couldn't get along for a while, and I was in between. And, you know, it does affect the community. It does affect individuals that we represent. But it's not as if we weren't able to get that straightened out. One of the important things that, as being Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee, one of the things that we did about six, seven years ago was restructure our Ethics Board. And we thought it was important because this is not the first time a matter like this has come before us. And what we tried to do with the commission, and what the commission tried to do, is really provide protections both to the council members and also to the commissioners. Set up a process that we're able to, be able to move forward and create the least amount of disruption to our, to the work that we need to do. Now, that doesn't always happen, and this happens occasionally. So, it's nothing new, we may see it happen again, you know, and come up in a different form. We, at this point, I think as a city...
I'm sorry. This is brief responses to public comment. If you want to push your button while, during discussion, feel free to, but this has to be brief.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was brief. But, 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 but I think, I think at this, I think at this point, you know, you kind of understand what I'm, what I'm doing. I think at this point, I think there is a process that should be followed, and I think it would be in the best interest of all parties to do that. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Are there any other brief comments in reply to public comment?
Yes, briefly, I just wanted to say that I do agree with some of the public comment, and as some of you had mentioned during the campaign, I did keep it positive my campaign. And so, I just, I was asked to not give specific details about one of the other commissioners that I spoke to on January 6th, actually, who sits on two commissions. And so, while I was out in the community, you get approached about wanting to serve on commissions. And so, for me, it was about that equity piece. And so, by no means do I want to add to the, what's the word I'm looking for? The divisiveness, thank you. I don't know if that was Irma or... The, to the divisiveness, Julie, to the divisiveness. I obviously have a better relationship with the first commissioner that I spoke with. So, I, you know, respect your opinions about the process, and maybe I did approach the process in the wrong manner. But for me, it is about making sure that I have the ability to appoint constituents that would like to be appointed and share the wealth, because some of you mentioned that you have served on several boards. And so, I'm looking at that equity piece, and I don't want to add to the divisiveness in our ward or our city. Thank you. So, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Now, it looks like Councilmember Melendez would like to speak.
No, I was up the first time, you didn't take it off. They thought I was talking a little too long.
All right. Are there any councilmembers who would like to discuss?
I just have one question, just very quick question. Sorry. But Councilmember Placentia, is there any, any possibility of you withdrawing the request that's on, that's on, before the council?
I would like to move this to a discussion on the Governmental Relations Commission or Committee.
I think, I think at this point, I think, I think at this point, excuse me, yeah, I think at this point, because there is a complaint, there is a couple, couple options. One, we can sit down and speak with Mr. Mills and yourself and I, or you can, if you feel that there are ethics violations, submit it to the Ethics Board for review and discussion. I also think there, the other option of just dismissing this matter, and then we can move forward with that. So, I mean, there's several options here that we can go.
Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. This has been a very long day, and I'm going to just kind of cut to the chase. The remarks made by my colleague, Councilmember Melendez, I think is a very good idea. For somebody who, I've been here now about six years, and about five years ago, there was an issue on the dais here that was very nasty. And it changed, it changed many relationships. It prolonged in the community for a long, long time. We still hear it today. And at that point, I told myself that while I was up here, I wasn't going to relive that situation again. And during that process, we had this kind of very loose Ethics Committee and Complaint Procedure. Since then, it has been revamped several different times. An awful lot of time has... An awful lot of time has been put into that. Mr. Hunter has spoken tonight, he's challenged the process, and through that process, there's been changes that have been made. So my suggestion at this point is either find, let's see if we can mediate this in some form or another, or take it to the Ethics, have an ethics complaint filed and let it go through that process, because what's there right now is the result of what happened four or five years ago, trying to remedy situations such as this.
Can I just add, I don't mean to cut in front of you, Chuck, but real quick, so I will pull the agenda item, but what I would like, and I guess we can talk about this at the other point in our agenda, about bringing back, or maybe taking it to another committee, about our commissions and boards and kind of what the process is, because I think that's something that we have to look at.
Councilmember Conder, would you still like to speak? Councilmember Conder?
Yeah, I could not go with that. This has to be solved tonight. This is a question about procedure and policy. But first of all, I'm appalled that, I'm appalled that the councilwoman brought up her predecessor and his ethics. He is the only person to serve on this council in the 100-plus years of this city that was three terms and never had an opponent after his first election. He did it right. He swept into every election, and to call into his, in the question his ethics is appalling. The procedures and policies here are set. First of all, the Sunshine Rule emergency was violated. This is not an emergency. If we had a video of Mr. Mill taking money from a contractor a week before he was going to make a vote, that'd be an emergency. We'd have to get him off if that was a true statement. This was not an emergency, this violated our Sunshine Rule. Secondly, we have a process for violations. If the councilwoman thinks he did do something unethical, then she has to file an ethics charge with the Ethics Committee under penalty of perjury. Let it be heard, let it come back to the council. That's the policy. We talked earlier about the law and rules. The law is the law, the rules are the rules. You know, when I won my election against my predecessor, he and I had issues. There were at least four board and commission members that he appointed that put out Youtubes against me, that put out false statements on Facebook. I didn't get rid of them, I didn't care. As a matter of fact, and I think Mr. Perry will remember this night, at one of the Ward 5 forums down in Arlington, Mr. Davis was there. And Mr. Perry, and I think it was Mr. Floyd and a few others, said, "Hey, we got to get a picture of Chuck shaking hands with Paul Davis." And they turned around, I was shaking hands with Paul Davis. I asked him how he was doing, and he asked me how I was doing. He congratulated me, and I, it's what professionals do. This is absolutely ridiculous, this has come out in public. The process is violated. So if the councilwoman wants to do something, then she needs to file an ethics charge with the Ethics Committee and let the process. I make a motion that we deny this tonight.
Here, a motion, looking for a second on that motion.
I pulled the item, so I don't know what he's talking about, but my question was to...
Maybe then, just a point of clarification, what happens when the item is pulled?
Then there's no vote on it. If it's pulled off, it's pulled down by the councilwoman.
And we don't need a motion to pull, it's just pulled?
It's, yeah, the motion is to...
Yeah, I will say this, it has been removed from the item. There was a question that Councilmember Placentia asked, or a possible referral to the Governmental Affairs, if she would still like to make that at the end of the meeting, it can be done. We do, all councilmembers have the opportunity to make a referral. At this point, it sounds like the matter is off the table at this point, and the matter is resolved, and we move on to the next item. That's what it sounds like to me, Mayor Protem, City Attorney.
So moving on to the next item, then, as this has been pulled? Yes? All right, that brings us to closed session.
Actually, I think it would be wise if you take the last two matters, which is City Attorney reports on previous closed-session items and any additional requests from council, and then we'll go into closed session so we don't have to reconvene.
Fantastic. We will go to the last two items, I believe that's Item 5 and 6 on the agenda.
There's no City Attorney report.
No City Attorney report, moving to Item 6, Items for Future City Council Consideration. We're on Item 6, Future Consideration.
Now, we're on Items for Future Consideration.
That's right.
You know, what I would like to do is, to Governmental Affairs, is to take a look at this, and the portion that I would like to see is maybe a discussion on the Sunshine Ordinance and maybe further defining the urgency, and on top of that, perhaps what type of documentation has to be provided to councilmembers ahead of time. And the committee could discuss it and bring suggestions, recommendations, or perhaps nothing, but leave it up to the committee to review, evaluate, and bring something back to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Placentia.
I'm not sure if it goes to Governmental Relations Commission, but to take a deep dive into our policies for appointing boards and commissioners, so I can get some clarity on some things. Oh, I said I'm not sure if it's for Governmental Relations Committee to bring back the process for appointing boards and commissions, and kind of the ins and outs of how we go about doing that, because of my concerns with terms and equity and those kinds of things.
Any other items to bring forward to future meetings? No, all right, that takes us to closed session.
City Council's adjourned to closed session, pursuant to Items 3A and 4 on the agenda.